All right, it's seven o'clock. Just want to remind everyone if you have a citizen's comment to go ahead and turn that in ASAP. Where should they, where the citizens' comments? Is there a box? Okay, so if you could turn those in as soon as possible. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started and I'm gonna ask Dr. Merritt to lead us in a few words in a moment of silence.
Thank you, President Wilson. It is with a heavy heart this evening that I share with you that tragedy has hit our PCCS family twice in the last few days. We were informed that we lost our dear Bonnie Donaldson, who is the executive assistant for Teaching and Learning. Anybody who knew Bonnie, she would call herself lovingly "The Paper Pusher", but Bonnie was so much more. Bonnie was truly the heart and soul of Teaching and Learning. And she touched not just that Teaching and Learning department, but basically every department and program within our district. We think about Bonnie, we think about all the historical knowledge in our district. She knows everyone. If you had a question, you pick up the phone to call Bonnie. And so this is something that has really shaken our entire school community, and we just want to lift her family up and our entire district up, keeping them in your thoughts. And as the tragedy continued, we also found out this morning, we lost our dear Tom Lawburns, affectionately known as Big Tom from our maintenance department. Tom just retired on August 31st. He and his wife, his wife Sue, retired in June as a teacher in our district, planning on spending their retirement years together, getting a home in Florida, and his life was cut short. And we will miss him. Tom is someone that you know of, is just a big guy with a big heart, is a great guy, a standard that's so high in terms of perfection. He took so much pride in his work in our district and just held everybody to that same standard, just a true example of a wonderful human being. Both of them will forever leave their memory in PCCS and their legend in PCCS. So I would like you all to join us at this time for a moment of silence in honor of both Bonnie and Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. So at this time, I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM and start with a, with a roll call. I'm Sean Wilson, President and Board of Education.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen-Wallop.
Good evening, everybody. LaRonda Chastain, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Anifah Tshuksedu, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Patty McCoy, thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out to this fine middle school.
If you could have Dr. Merritt introduce yourself and your team.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. Thank her for being here, taking our minutes at every board meeting. I'd like to ask the main members of the team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Nick Brandt, Executive Director, Community Services and Marketing, welcome.
Curtis Quince, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Welcome, Elizabeth Artenian-Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
Good evening, Beth Rell, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer.
Hi, I'm W. P. Oz. I'm the Chief Finance Officer.
Good evening, Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer.
If you can now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, first piece of business is the adoption of Agenda Approval Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the Agenda Approval Consent Agenda Action Item Number 22-09-11. Second.
All right, Dr. Merritt, continue on this.
Thank you, President Wilson. This evening, Ms. Langford and her team have been busy hiring champions. We have over 42 new hires for your consideration this evening, and we welcome them to Comen Canton Community Schools. We also have leads and resignations. We have the regular meeting minutes from August 23rd, 2022. And finally, we have First Reading of Bylaws and Policies 0167.3, that's Public Participation at Board Meetings, Policy 2266, Non-Distributational on the Basis of Sex and Education Programs or Activities, and Policy 3120-4120, Employment and Personnel.
Fantastic. All in favor, say aye. Say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, hang up. Our motion carries 7-0, 6-0, sorry. Ms. Langford, if you can walk us through new hires, leads and resignations.
All right, thank you, President Wilson. So when I say your name, if you can just stand up to be recognized. I know I'm kinda having my back to you, so I won't be able to see everyone. I'm trying to figure this out. So Jennifer Assang, she will be an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson. And since we have so many, maybe we wanna hold our applause to them. But please stand up so that you can be recognized and just remain standing. Caitlin Burner, she will be an elementary classroom teacher at Dotson. Evelyn Brisman, psychologist at East and Holstein. Nicole Caliskan, an elementary teacher at Workman. Jennifer Camore, who will be a teacher consultant at Erickson and Holstein. Sarah Canfield, who will be an elementary teacher at Bentley. Thomas Carr, an elementary teacher at Field. Bethany Caswell, who will be an elementary teacher at Holstein. Bridget Clover, who will be a behavior support specialist at Farron. Charlotte Collins, who will be a music elementary and secondary teacher at Canton and Erickson. Stephen Cross, who will be a music elementary teacher at Holstein and Farron. Jean DeRose, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Tonda. Tiffany Gartner, a media specialist at Erickson. Alicia Gross, an elementary classroom teacher at Holstein. Wilma Gumber, an elementary classroom teacher at Smith. Chelsea Wistala, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson. Yazra Hamaji, Harmadi, I'm sorry, who will be a counselor at East. Stephanie Hirsch, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Isbister. Catherine Jaquilla, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. Amanda Juntenen, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Hoben and Miller. Amy Lorman, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Workman. Jason LaGori, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. Morgan Matat-Medlak, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson. Taylor Murphy, an elementary classroom teacher at Field. Peter Narath, who will be a secondary ASD teacher at Plymouth. Brandy Noma, who will be an instructional coach at Bird. Jacob Necterline, who will be a math teacher at Canton. Christina Ocho, Ocho, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Bentley. Melissa Parent, an elementary classroom teacher at Hoben. Michelle Peters, an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson. Jennifer Pink, an elementary classroom teacher at Miller. Rose Marie Pollam, who will be a math teacher at Pioneer. Jo Sims, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Workman. Rachel Stewart, who will be a pre-K GSRP teacher at Isbister. Jessica Swihart, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Erickson. Erica Thomas, a teacher consultant at Workman and Gallimore. Jordan Tabarro, who will be an elementary classroom teacher at Workman. Maggie Wonderlick, who will be an elementary classroom EL teacher at Dotson. I think I got everyone. Am I missing any teaching staff that are here? I'm sorry.
Jason Moore, please, talk about it.
Okay. Jason, I will talk with you right after this, so we can figure out what's going on. So that is all of our teaching staff, and welcome to everyone. It's wonderful to be here today. So you can be seated, and once I finish with the remaining staff, you're able to leave. And my executive assistant, Jennifer, is somewhere here. She has a small token of appreciation that she wants to give you on your way out the door, if you're wanting to leave. If not, you're welcome to stay. All right, so moving on to some administrative staff here. So we have Kason Sharp. Kason, are you here? All right, there's Kason. Kason is going to be a student support coordinator for us at Miller Elementary. Kason is currently a teacher in the school district and has worked for us for a little while. He holds a Bachelor of Arts from Alvin College and his Master of Arts from Eastern Michigan University. So welcome, Kason. Jonathan Flukes. So Jonathan Flukes will be our Director of Data Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. What a title. Jonathan comes to us from Oakland ISD, where he does lots of data work there. A lot of you may be familiar with him, because I believe he's been before the board, before he serves on the committee, the...
SPAC.
SPAC Committee. Jason has both of his degrees from the University of Michigan and has a wealth of knowledge in the data field. So welcome, Jason. I'm sorry, Jonathan. All right, and then we have Katie Illajek. There's Katie. Katie is going to be our DEI Climate and Culture Specialist. So she will be working under Denise Lilly, who I believe is here this evening. Katie comes to us with a wealth of knowledge and experience in DE and I work, and we're happy to have her with us. She has her bachelor's degree and her master's degree from University of Michigan and her Juris Doctorate from DePaul University. Welcome, Katie. And last, but certainly not least, I believe I got everyone, we have David Reed-Nordwall. There's David. David has been hired as our Principal of Canton High School. We are very happy to have him. David comes from us as an Associate Principal in Bloomfield Hills. He also has served as an Assistant Principal in Rose Point. He has both his bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of Michigan and his Ed Leadership Degree from Oakland University. Welcome, David. We're happy to have you. And I believe that concludes all of our new hires for the evening. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, welcome to everyone. Let's give everyone a round of applause. I just wanna point out that, you know, to me, this demonstrates with the hire of Jonathan, the word perseverance. So I know we're after him for a while. You can run, but you cannot hide Jonathan. Welcome, Jonathan and team. All right, next up is Celebrating Success with Member McColl.
All right, so tonight, Celebrating Success, we are going to be honoring the work of circus clubs in our community for their generous support. These groups have provided to our schools for many years, but in particular, we are recognizing the Kiwanis Club of Colonial Clota and the Plymouth New Rotary Club's work to support school safety in PCCS, led by Plymouth New Rotary Club Past President Dale Yakulu. The clubs, the clubs launched a multi-year campaign to raise money to invest in upgraded security measures for all of our schools. These upgrades were developed by our School Safety and Security Team, led by our Director, Josh Meyer. Tonight, we're gonna honor Kiwanis members, Lee Harrison, who was retired, Isbister Elementary Principal, Dr. Buzz Bozell, and Mr. Tim Tingstad for their roles in securing a $12,000 lead gift to support the purchase of a firearms and explosive detection canine dog, who will be used in all of our schools and special events. The dog also doubles as an emotional support comfort animal for students, and we expect this important new addition to the PCCS team to arrive in our schools sometime this fall. We are excited about this innovative and effective piece of our security plan, and we are grateful for these clubs for their gift. We would like to invite Mr. Yakulu to the podium to share more about the fundraising campaign.
Thank you. First of all, my last name is Yedall. So that's all right, that's all right. This happens all the time. So, and I've been called worse things in different settings, too. So I just wanted to know. Frank asked me to talk a little bit about how this all came about. After the shutdown happened in February, March, whatever it was, okay. Our program committee for our Kiwanis Club, or Kiwanis Club, for our Rotary Club, met, and there was a great deal of discussion about, we need to do something to assist the school district with this issue. And what I did immediately after that was called Frank and started talking about the matter with him. And our intention was to do something a little different than what we saw going on in other communities, where citizens would come, show up here in upset and concern, and create a dialogue that would necessarily, not necessarily be the most positive in nature. So we talked about first doing this through our service organizations with Kiwanis, two other Rotary Clubs, the Morning Rotary Club, the Canton Rotary Club, to hold a forum of sorts, where Josh could come and talk about, as, in a limited way, but in a persuasive way, what was going on in terms of the school district's response to this matter. And we also asked the three local police departments to participate, and we were lucky to have the man officers, two chiefs and a deputy chief, who were also able to be there, which really affirmed that the district, that their plan, that Josh, they had confidence in what Josh was doing, confidence in what you were doing, and at the same time, they gave their two cents about what they thought needed to go on with the community. And we had probably about 100 people, and I think the superintendent was in attendance that day, as well as some of the board members. Subsequent to that, we did an evening session that was done over at Park, which generated the same type of response. Plus, we had Congresswoman Dingell at that event and other folks from other decision-making bodies in the state. Subsequent to that, the discussion went on, and most of the time when these things happen, you know, like you get this immediate reaction to do something, and then nothing happens after that. So began talking with the various service clubs about looking at doing something on a multi-year basis, not just to support financially this matter, but also to have some stakeholders that would also be able to take some, play a role in this process as it unfolded over the next few years. Because as some of you may know, I used to be the Executive Director of Growth Works. So I'm accustomed to attending to the matters of kids that other people disregard, don't see as being a threat or having issues, and in fact, they need an awful lot of help. We're living in a time when these things are gonna continue to happen for a while. So the intention is to create an opportunity to have stakeholders in the community participate, not just in funding matters, but also be people that can help support the efforts of this institution to do the things that are necessary to keep the kids safe and to move things forward. The Kiwanis Club was the first organization to kind of rally up to the bar and put some money on the table. And so I'm gonna let Lee talk a little bit about what they have done in this process, and I wanna thank you for inviting us today and giving us this opportunity to talk about what we're up to.
Yeah, thank you. Joined by Buzz Bozell, Dr. Buzz Bozell, he was a dentist in the community for years, and Tim Tingstad. They are, along with me, we are three of the four committee chairs. So we meet monthly to decide what projects we'll do for the next month. So Frank Rucirello is our president, soon-to-be ex-president. He brought us information about this, and when we saw the plan, we were really impressed with the thoroughness of the plan and the workability of it. But it's a big project, and we need to get started, and we thought maybe the dog was a really great first step, because it could do something immediately. Some of the other plans are a little longer term, but we wanna be involved all the way through the plan. So if you've got Kiwanis with you, if you have Rotary Clubs along with you, you have some great support. So we appreciate you inviting us tonight and recognizing us, and you can count on our continued support. Thanks.
This isn't just restricted to the service clubs. The two chambers are participating in this, and also the Plymouth Community United Way is indicating interest as well. So our intention over time, I think we still have some work to do to find out what investments the district will be making in some of this, to share with this group, so that folks can go back to their organizations and begin to essentially pledge towards this process. So we'll probably wind up with, I would say, seven to eight different organizations in the community that'll participate in it as it unfolds. It's fun to add. Thanks.
So on behalf of the Board of Education, I have an award for the Kiwanis Club and for the Plymouth New Rotary Club, VIP Awards for Volunteers and Public Service in our schools. We really appreciate it. Looking forward to the dog, the dog in school. I love the dogs in schools. At the, at the thing at the park, that was really good. So thank you for being here. So this is Kiwanis Club, and this is New Rotary. We thank you so much. Anybody have anything else to say?
Just the Fall Fest was last weekend, so if somebody comes up and wants you to buy a chicken dinner or breakfast, this is how we raise our money.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you, Member McColl, for leading that. All right, next on to see Board Committee reports action. We'll start with the President's report, and if you could pull that up, Nick. I'll go through because I don't, okay, everyone has a copy. All right, so first up is just priority tracking. Really, the two highlights on here is the Board of Education newsletter. And what we're gonna do, since we can't really see the screen, I'm just gonna email it out to everybody. And really, I wanna thank Members Sudo, Secretary Sudo, for really doing the legwork on this. She provided a few examples of other newsletters with Board of Education that we can finish our coffee. And then ultimately, we really landed on five different categories. The first one is just a message from the President to staff, students, and families, and then ultimately a board calendar, so that we're keeping the community up to date on what's going on. And that would include forums and workshops and regular board meetings, just so people have it. And then also board policies review and committee work highlights update. So one of the things we wanna do is often when we pass policies, especially meaningful policies, we wanna have an opportunity to break that down, share a little bit more information on the policy and how it might affect our student body and our community as a whole. And then ultimately, board activity highlights. So if the board is in the community, if they're in the schools, things of that nature, I think it's important that the community understands, understands that. And then we're looking at a link for the role of the board. So often, when we're out talking to community members, there is confusion about the role of the board is. A lot of times, I get confused with the administrative role. And so having a link that they can easily reference, that would be good, and then a link to resolving concerns. So once again, the board always welcomes emails and feedback and questions, but often there's a more direct pathway that the community can take to resolving issues or questions they have. And so we wanna constantly keep them reminded of that. And then name pictures of the Board of Education, and then, you know, information, home phone, no, I'm joking. I'm just really joking. Should've seen Member Christensen, she's face. No, so really just photos of the board as well as email info, so that once again, if they have a question on something they see in the newsletter, we just wanna make it easy for them to be able to click on and follow up. So this just goes back to, you know, improving and increasing our community relations and communication. And then finally, on this slide, from an administration and board relationship standpoint, that's something we need to, you know, we've been slowly working towards these priorities, and so that's something I'll work with Dr. Merritt and Vice President Chastain and other board members to schedule a meeting workshop to kind of talk about that. So that's on that slide. The next slide is future agenda topics. As we talked about a couple of meetings ago, you know, we really wanted to take the strategic priorities and start to rotate them and give an update. Tonight is gonna be the first example of that. Beth Rell is gonna provide a presentation for us. And then, and during that, what I would like to ask the board to do is, let's use this as a template. Let's use this as kind of the pilot, if you will. And as Beth is going through her presentation, ask yourself, is this the kind of information the board would like to receive to, one, you know, look at it against the dynamic plan, because the board's role is to help to lead the dynamic plan. The administrative role, the administration's role is to implement. They decide the how it's gonna get done, but then the board has another role, which is oversight, and making sure that it's implemented with fidelity. So the question you should ask yourself is, does this presentation give us that oversight to know that this, you know, dynamic plan is being implemented with fidelity? And then, you know, that's part of what we can kind of talk about afterwards. And then also, what you'll notice is that we added tentative dates to each of the other categories, and also some of the emerging topics that the board asked to address. These are just holding dates. What I would ask is by next Friday, or I'm sorry, next Wednesday, if the board can send any recommendations back as far as timing, because what Because what we didn't want to do was set these dates. And there may be a more pressing argument from a board member to say, I really think the board's strategic priority should come before November, or whatever the case is, right? So this is tentative. We want the board's feedback on this before we finalize it. And for all of them, all the way down to the other items that each of you have asked and you put on the board agenda. But the big thing is, the reason we wanted to do this is, if you look at the calendar for the year, we're really backload. If you look at the types of agenda items later in the second semester, there's some pretty heavy agenda items. So we have to get ahead of it and really space it out and put the dates on the calendar so that we make sure we address what it is that the board has asked to address. Next slide, Master Board. There are a couple of updates on this. The first one is just a reminder, September 21st is the next community forum. And I know that's on the agenda later, so I'm going to go there. There's a date set for the one after that, the Community Partnership led by Chastain Sedu. And one person is left off there, but that's October 12th. And then we're still waiting for the final date. We'll get the final date for November for the Equity and Inclusion Forum. And then lastly, just a couple of things. One, I want to call out, you know, there is an issue with workman transportation and I had an opportunity to go and kind of walk the problem, if you will, with the community. They invited me out, some of the parents. But I really want to uplift it as a way to get things accomplished in this district. I feel like the families were very respectful, very aggressive, not in a bad way, but just very aggressive in raising their concerns. They came to the board meetings, they made their concerns heard. They followed up with emails, made their concerns heard. But the thing I want to point out is they did it very respectfully and also from a position of wanting to solve the problem. And I think that that really went a long way, you know, with helping us solve the problem quickly. And then I also want to shout out that the administration acted quickly on it to help resolve it and kind of find some little ground. So, you know, it's one of those things where if everyone comes to the table with really truly trying to find a solution, we can get to work done very quickly. And so I just want to thank the parents for inviting me out to walk with them and understand what the solution is. And then, once again, recognize the administration for, you know, doing their best to solve the problem as best they could. So thank you for that. Also, I want to recognize Members Sedu who joined me at Workman. I'm the first day to welcome back the students. And definitely, I want to recognize President, or not President, but Superintendent, Principal. Thank you. I'm trying to give it all kinds of titles. Johnson, for, I just want to recognize, you know, those pretty, Members Sedu and I were talking about it, you know, to be a principal and to see what goes on that first day. You know, there's the excitement, you know, you have parents who forgot snacks that they're dropping off at the doors who expect to get it to the, you know, we realize that we would have forgot the kids' names, you know, as soon as they turn around. But it was like organized chaos in a very good way and just a lot of great energy, you know, parents coming back, parents happy to drop their kids off at school, kids happy to be back at school. So it was a really good experience. And, you know, maybe next year, we're talking, we can get the whole board to come out, pick a school, and we can just welcome everyone back because it was definitely a great experience. And with that, that is the president's report. All right, next up is SPA with a member Sedu.
Thank you. For those of you that heard that Jonathan was part of SPA, it's Student Performance and Achievement. So it's not a whole lot of fun. It is for us, but I mean, in terms of, it's not just lounging around. It's talking a lot about data, which it's great at. Before I give my report, I do want to just, you know, express my deepest condolences for Bonnie. She was the executive secretary who worked with us in the committee and was a tremendous, you know, voice within the board office and within the work that we did. She had a great sense of humor. I mean, she always made us laugh while she did phenomenal work. I mean, she was dedicated, kind, thoughtful. And so, you know, when you hear news like that, it shakes everyone. So wanted to express my condolences to the families, friends, staff who are impacted by this along with Tom. So just wanted to say that because she was part of SPA. The other is congratulations to Jonathan. We're going to miss him. He was a great asset to our Student Performance and Achievement Committee with the data mindset that he brought. Again, asking really thoughtful questions, giving us different perspectives and insight into research and best practices, different models of looking at data. So thank you, Jonathan. We're going to miss you. Hopefully, you can still kind of sneak in and give us some insight. For the update, we have our next meeting coming up September 21st. We usually meet the first Wednesday of each month. Obviously, this first Wednesday was back to school. We wanted to give the staff some time to readjust and getting kids back to school. So our meeting is September 21st. And we have out of state, out of country field trips. We have grading with equity and high school programs, right?
Credit.
Credit recovery programs. So those are the three agenda items, and I would encourage everyone to come and join us. I know some families were asked about the field trips and the process. So for those of you that are interested, please join us and share your thoughts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Committee with a member Sedu.
So we have met that since the last meeting. We will be meeting in two weeks. It will be at the board office. It is in the collaboration space, which is on the second floor. You get, you go up the stairs or get off the elevator, you go all the way to the end. And there we are. It's at 5:30, and we would love to have everybody there.
Thank you. FNO, Member Kehoe is not here, so I'm assuming Christmas in there, Brooks?
Yeah, I was there. Thank goodness. No. Well, it's great that our finance and operations committee is working well with the school district. And we had, we started at 5:00 last Thursday, and we had no public comments. Next thing on the agenda was approval of the minutes passed for the last meeting, which we found nothing unusual. And the third item that we had was summer cleaning and summer bond work presentation. And the last item we had, or the second last item, reviewed different parts of the bond programs. And then we had a discussion over retainer center and the former maintenance building. Our next meeting is next Thursday on, it's the 22nd at 5:00 PM. You're all welcome. Hopefully, we can have some public comments on this. So that's it.
Thank you, Member Brooks. Student Voice in Action Committee, which is a committee that chaired. I'm actually going to turn it over to a couple of our students. We did have a meeting yesterday, and they're really honing in on timeline and next steps. Once again, just as a reminder, you know, this group has worked through the summer to get this committee off the ground, which I think, you know, just really speaks volumes to their commitment and their excitement around having a board-level committee, you know, where their voice is going to be heard and they'll be able to influence the work of the board. So with that, I'd like to invite up two of our students. Please introduce yourself, your grade and your school, and then, you know, bring us up to speed on where we are. You guys make some noise.
All right. Hello, my name is Lemon Gill. I'm a senior at King High School, and I'm part of the planning team of students who's creating this committee.
Hello, my name is Josh Patterson. I'm at Plymouth High School, and I'm a freshman.
So I wanted to discuss ASCA as a whole, recapping some of the main ideas and important information of our group. So where students who are eager to be heard but don't fit, we are looking for students... Sorry, let me start over. Now I got the wrong thing. I don't, too far ahead. Okay, so we're opening the application process for this group for students from sixth to 12th grade. So it opens up opportunities for middle school students, and we kind of get to hear from all different eighth groups. So we're looking for students who are eager to be heard but don't fit the stereotypical stats of normal application. Meaning, we're kind of venturing out of the typical, what's your GPA, what are your grades, what perfect depth sugar for thurs do you do? We want students from diverse backgrounds with a variety of opinions and ideas. Again, we're focusing on people who want to be action, people who clubs and stuff aren't usually typically advertised to, or students who feel like they haven't really found a place at school and who want a group where they can be present and pitch new ideas and take immediate action. So it's meant to be a safe space to prosper. We're making basic requirements regarding attendance, though. A student on this committee must attend 80% of the meetings. That was our consensus. Possibly, 80% was the consensus within our group, but we will be, I guess, speaking with the whole group, just to double check that. It's to guarantee accountability and participation. We created an application that dives deep into individuals' voice rather than the perfect on paper stats. So we, as a group, brainstormed a few different questions that we felt like spoke to the kids' passions and their ideas rather than, again, the stereotypical stats that we normally get asked. We ask questions that engage our ideas, that can lead to passions. We are doing a soft launch and then the following day releasing the application. So we're going to go ahead and get into the dates so that we have like a consistent linear plan. We have a flyer made with a QR code that takes students to the exact place on our district website. And this is where students can find the description of the committee and the application. So as for structure, we decided to create subcommittees and chair positions. This year, we'll be doing one single-year position and one two-year position. And then continuing from here on out, we think that we're going to stick to single-year positions just so we can kind of recycle out students and get like new leaders every year so that we don't have the same people holding positions for the four years at a time. So now we're going to get into the things that we actually changed in our last meeting yesterday. We changed the name of the group. So instead of Student Voice and Action, we're going to be Student Voice in Action. We did finalize our calendar dates, which are listed below, so I'm going to read those in a second. We're working on our advertisement sources and just where people can find general information. So we want to make an Instagram. We're working on creating a video, we have a script written. We have a flyer, thanks Josh. And then we also want to work with E81, just to reach parents and younger audiences who still listen to the radio. We also wanted to let you guys know that we do have a section on the website for PCCS. So if there are our parents who are curious or students who need more information, we do have an official section. We're working on an updated version of the flyer and the logo, which we will be releasing by the week of the 19th. So as for that, we do want September 19th to be our official soft launch date, where we kind of get out the information about the group, let people know like this is happening. And then September 20th, we do have a clubs and activity event, our Bus School, that pizza. And that's where we'll be setting up the table and really honing in on advertising our And then for students who obviously don't attend the park, we will be having flyers we put up at their schools, we'll be sending our video out. We do have an ASVA email that will probably mass email people. And then we're going to do all that advertisement, and then the deadline is going to end up being October 7th. And then we're hoping by November 1st, we should have finalized with the students, and then the first meeting should take place before Thanksgiving, if everything goes as planned. So that's kind of what we went over, what our group does.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say thanks to Vice President Chastain for her idea in making it Student Voice in Action. I think it really shows what we are standing for. And also, thank you to everybody else who's really helped out in the committee.
Fantastic. Thank you both. Break down.
I've got one quick question. A problemistic, it's completely me. Did you say the date that the apps will open?
Yeah, September 19th. In September 19th.
The 19th, yeah. Thank you.
And they'll close October 7th, correct? So you have students that have three weeks to apply. So no problem. I will say, it's one of the easiest committees I've ever chaired. You pretty much open it up, turn it over, and then close it, and that's pretty much it. So break down that. All right, administrative reports, recommendations, superintendent's report.
Thank you. As we see our young people present this evening, that's what it's all about. We're here for you. It's all about being student-centered and making sure that we have the best experience for our students because that's what we deserve. So thinking about that, I echo President Wilson's sentiments on the first day of school. I would say by far, the top five best days of the school year. That first day of school breaks, number one, just the excitement in the air of our young people returning, our families returning, our staff just readying themselves. I think everybody truly did unplug this summer and recharge and just ready for some normalcy. And some wonderful, innovative, creative things are happening. We'll hear a little bit more about that this evening. So just, it was a very exciting time. I appreciate President Wilson and Secretary Nelson, Vice President Sedu, for being able to come and welcome our students back. And I definitely say, that's something that we can do annually, making sure that everyone is there because it's really nothing like that first day. I also wanted to give a shout out to our building administrators and our teaching staff, our support staff for some incredible open houses over the last couple of weeks. That's our day to open our buildings and invite our families in, to meet staff, and really readying themselves for what the year will look like for students. And I began to receive texts and emails from parents and from staff members just talking about Open House this year, which I thought was really neat. Just the excitement of being back in person, especially when you look at our PCEP campus and having to be virtual for the last three years for Open House. And it was convenient, but just being able to walk that campus and know what our young students are doing every day, it had an excitement for our family. So just great job to everyone for a great start to the 2022-23 school year. Part of the school year that wasn't a bright start, but we're still headed in the right direction, is our transportation. And so we do appreciate the patience of our families as we work through our transportation. The good news is that we have every single bus route covered. And we didn't know going into the school year, we were down 24 drivers about a week before the school year started. So I do want to give Ms. Pies, Mr. Ruskowski, does anybody, Jim G., Ms. Angela Reynolds from Durham, that entire team, just a shout out because they work around the clock, have those positions filled. And with that, having new hires that Friday, learning the routes, we want to make sure that people are out there, our drivers are safe. So we have had some delays in the perfect storm would be. We also have all this incredible, incredibly frustrating transportation or construction delays as well. So we appreciate our patience of our families as we're working through 102 routes fully covered, and they're getting better each day. And there was a hiccup with our robo-call and text messaging system. So I did receive the update today that that system has now been fixed so that we have the Bus Tracker app should be available for all general education routes. And if there's any problem with that, just call the transportation line. And again, for our special education routes, that is not on the Bus Tracker system because those routes go directly to homes. So these are only for our general education routes. But just want to, again, shout out to the team for getting our transportation up and running. And as we get through each day, we will hopefully experience less and less delays. I want to give a shout out to our teacher at PCEP, our business teacher, Ms. Barbara Rutecki. She's always finding new ways to adapt and educate our students. This has really been the hallmark of her career. And during the COVID-19 pandemic, Ms. Rutecki's adaptability as an educator saw her help hundreds of students who had taken advantage of online educational opportunities to the PCCS partner, Michigan Virtual's role of offerings. Her work was honored recently when Michigan Virtual named Ms. Rutecki its 2022 Online Mentor of the Year. The award, which has been presented to one mentor every year since 2015, is a distinction given to a mentor who has demonstrated excellence in teaching and enhanced student success in the online classroom. Now, Ms. Rutecki has been a business education and computer teacher with PCCS since 2001, and she became an online mentor in 2021. She's really enjoyed getting to know students in a different setting. She was a teacher of one child one year, and he really enjoyed himself and thrived under her leadership. Michigan Virtual officers say that Mentors of the Year are nominated by Michigan Virtual instructors who are in regular contact with both students and educators regarding student progress and success. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Rutecki. This is fantastic. And we take that as a key theme of being leaders in educational innovation as we continue to see our staff members highlighting for the expertise that they bring and really the student work that they're doing in innovative spaces for students that they're on a path to achieve that goal. Final update that I want to share, last spring, we brought you the new and improved official district website at PCCS K12.com. And as a 22-23 school year... And as the 2223 school year begins, we now bring to our community the new and improved PCCS mobile app. The new app enables you to quickly access information from our website and save events to your phone from our school calendars. There's also quick links to our staff directories, MyStar, lunch venue, social media, and so much more. Download the new app at searching Flippin' Cat. They help me.
Apple Store. Search Flippin' Cat CS in the Apple Store and the Android Store.
I'm still learning technology.
Do good.
All right. So please join me in downloading that app, and it'll be a great way to get connected to our PCCS community. And that is it for me this evening.
Fantastic. Are there any questions for Dr. Merritt?
I have a question and a comment, so I'll do the question first. There were some community members who actually opposed, and someone shared that when they tried to call transportation, they got a response that it was a board decision to not have certain updates on the app. I just want clarification that it was not a board decision.
Yeah, so we did clarify that. I think we checked back, and it might have been a misunderstanding of what was said. We don't have any evidence that that is what was communicated, but we understand that that was interpreted. In terms of that app itself, though, that is not a board decision, but the app itself was only, it was a technical difficulty. We weren't making any changes. So there wasn't a change that had been made by administration either. It was just uploading of the new routes of information had not taken place, and now that has been corrected, so that is okay.
Thank you. To the families that expressed that, I did tell them I would look into it, so thank you for helping us clarify that. My comment is for Mr. Rutecki. I just want to say that my son had the privilege of having her as a business teacher and for two online classes. And I think I can say she's one of the most student-centered, empathetic, professional educators I've come across. And what an honor it is, number one, to know her and to know that she got this award. So, Mr. Rutecki, if you're watching and you're listening, congratulations and keep up the great work.
Fantastic. Other questions or comments? So on to teaching and learning, innovation period overview. So this is a presentation on our strategic theme, leader in educational innovation.
Hi. Hi, everybody. I'm Beth Rayle, Chief Academic Innovation Officer, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about a new program that we're launching at PCCS this fall. So over the summer, as Dr. Merritt indicated, many people were kind of unplugged and enjoying the summer, while others were coming together and rethinking and reimagining some things that could happen and developing and devising something called an innovation period for our elementary fifth special. So specials at the elementary take place weekly, and currently we have four. Previous to this, we have four specials: art, music, physical education, and media. So we have an opportunity this summer to come together and develop a fifth special. This helps equalize planning time at the high school, or the secondary and the elementary for teachers, but also allows us to do some very unique and creative things to support the dynamic plan and the learner profile. Our community will hear more about the learner profile as we do a full-scale launch of it this fall. As we look at tonight's presentation, though, there are several things I want to cover. One is I want to share an overview of this pilot program, and a pilot means that we're testing it out. So we're going to take the next couple of years to determine what's working with this program, is it meeting the needs that we're looking for, which I'll explain in a few minutes, and shall we continue as we move forward? Secondly, we're going to explore how the innovation period supports the PCCS dynamic plan. We talk about our dynamic plan. It's our roadmap for the next six years, and as we look at that roadmap, what's taking us along that journey? Are we making sure that what we're doing attaches to what we say we want to do for our community, and that our community stakeholders came together and said it's important as well, led by the Board of Education? We want to actualize the PCCS learner profile. We've talked about it briefly at the board, but we'll also dig a little bit deeper into it today, and as I said, communications and marketing will be doing a full-scale launch of it this fall. And finally, we're going to discuss how the innovation period attaches and connects the findings from our data last year, specifically our data around the Panorama data and SEL supports, and things that our students said, and our parents and our teachers said that are important for our students. So let's look first into the dynamic plan, and let's look at the fact that they cover many of the aspects of the dynamic plan. Does that use the mic? Nope, okay. But primarily, Goal E, PCCS will be recognized as a leader and innovator for student learning and growth. As we look at the learner profile, many of you remember this, some folks may not have been as familiar with this, but we took a couple-year journey with stakeholders across our district, community members, parents, staff members, students. All types of stakeholders from across the community came together and said, what do our students need not just now, but five, 10, 15 years after they leave us? And they came, and all of that work culminated in six major skills and dispositions. You see them on the screen. Collaborator, ethical and global citizen, critical thinker, goal-directed and resilient, communicator, and innovator. Within those six skills and dispositions, there are things that are called I can statements. Those were created by the young people in our district. Our students created those. So as we look into the future, and as we continue to work around these, we look at how this attaches. So we're going to look at the overview of our innovation period, and we're going to talk a little bit, I'll talk to you about how the modules play out in the innovation period. Our elementaries are on trimesters, so each module will attach to a trimester. Module one will be about learning about who I am as a learner. In other words, neuroscience and neuroplasticity, but at developmentally appropriate level for kindergarten through fifth grade. Think about things like growth mindset, knowing that my brain is a muscle and it grows like anything else, that I'm not capped in my ability by anything except for my written perseverance, how hard I work, how well I do, and how much people believe in me, and we grow together. Also, thinking about things like learning preferences. As I learn, in my primarily auditory, visual, kinesthetic, how do those things come together to help me be my best self as a student and as an innovator? Module two is about collaborating with others, working with others, learning how to work in a team, learning how to be a part of a community of learners. One of the things we know is, we often say things like, we want students to collaborate more. Well, what does that look like? How do they know what that means, and how do we help them develop those skills? And finally, module three will be design thinking challenges, giving students the opportunity to design and innovate, iterate, ask questions, prototype, and learn about the fact that when it doesn't stick the first time, we keep trying. We keep trying, and we keep working through it, and we work together, and something magical happens. So as we do these things, we want to look at how do they attach to what we know about our students based on data from last year? Why this class, and how does it link? Want to take us back into time to our June 28, 2022 Board of Education meeting and the findings of our comprehensive needs assessment. You'll remember that we talked about many things, but one of which was the data that came out of our Panorama surveys and other types of student self-recording for K through third through 12th grade, and our kindergarten through second grade teacher findings about how do our students do on things like written perseverance? How do they do on self-regulation skills? How do they do in growth mindset? Growth mindset meaning the opposite of a deficit mindset. Deficit mindset means I don't believe that I can do something. Growth mindset meaning I believe that I can do something, and I know I can persevere and do it. So as we looked at those skills, we had an opportunity to build them into a program this year. So throughout this summer, staff from PCCS worked with some national folks who came together and some local folks as well. We had the opportunity to work with some folks from the Ann Arbor Stevens School who have a program called IDEA, Innovation, Design, Engineering, and Animation. They came together with us, they had built that program, so they came together to us and shared their expertise. We worked with folks who are national faculty from Buck Institute, who are steeped and experts in project-based learning, who shared their wisdom with us. We worked with folks who have worked across the nation doing innovative practices, all the way from Texas to California to the East Coast and Virginia, who worked with us virtually and worked with us in person, and said, let's share this together, and let's take this journey, and let's do something kind of unique and fun and creative. So, show you a couple of examples of a couple of the units, or a couple of the lessons from the first module, which is who am I as a learner? This one's about growth mindset. The I can statements that are here came directly from the learner profile, and Diane Robertson has a couple of the materials that we have used as we built this program. So there are some books, there are some print materials that the teachers use as they uncover skills for students. And we also attach these to the MYTEC standards, the Michigan Integrated Competency Standards for Students. We also look at things like collaboration, I can collaborate with others. And we have a number of teachers who have taken this journey with us this summer and who have taken this step to do something new and creative and try something different this year. So I'm going to ask those who are there to stand and be recognized, and I'm going to ask a couple of folks to come and share with you kind of a little bit of insight into the journey. So Angela Bigum, Beth Breslin, Brianna Scott, Cheryl Zuzo, Chrissy Ladner, Kelly Howell, Lisa Zizik, Michelle Rushlow, and Susan Sauerbeck took this journey with us. And I'm also going to ask Dr. Ally Williams and Zainah Junawi to stand because these two young leaders spent the summer with us as well, helping oversee this project and developing some leadership skills as they look to become the next leaders as PCCS as well. So I'd like to first have you recognize them, and then I'm going to ask a couple of folks to come and share. So please be my rock and roll. And we have a couple of folks who'd like to come up and share a couple of things.
Ms. Rushlow, please.
She pushed it off, did you notice? Hi, I'm Angela Bigum, and I am one of the innovation teachers. I get the opportunity to work at Fordham's sister schools, and I have to say that the kids, the students are so excited and pumped up about what we're doing. The buzz, the first couple of days from the bus line, teachers are coming in and they're like, oh, everyone's talking about innovation. I'm like, yes! So they're excited, it's been fun. I have, they know I'm on legs right now as I look down, I was sitting there. It is, it is great to be able to work with the kindergartners through fifth grade, same lessons, just in different pieces. So we are having a good time, we are collaborating with each other, talking all the time, what did you do, how did you do that? It's been a really great, Beth and Maureen leading us have been amazing, so we're really excited to be part of this journey.
So, real life story, I'm Michelle Rushlow, innovation teacher, Gallimore and Miller. Real life story from Gallimore today, Krista Dewitt, who's just third grade, and she said, she came up to me this morning in the hallway, she said, I have to tell you, kids that I had last year are stopping me in the hallways, outside, at the playground, and telling me all about you, and that you're going to let them fold paper airplanes and throw them in the building! And so kids are excited, they are ready to work, they're ready to learn, they're ready to grow their brains and stretch those muscles, and talking about working together collaboratively and how that's different from just having a partner and all of the things in between. So I'm so excited to be able to take this journey this year. Thank you for supporting this.
Hello, I'm Chrissy Ladner. I teach innovation at Honda Elementary and the Elementary Virtual Academy, and it has gone so well. We're on step one right now, but the children, the students are really responding well. They, I love listening to them articulate their thinking when they're trying something new, and they really do get it that lots of mistakes are part, like iterations are part of like how you get great things. You have to let your ideas flow. You're most creative when you're not mad at yourself for making mistakes. You're creative when you are embracing them and learning from them, and they really do get it. So I'm thanking for the training, thanking for the thought put behind this class, and thank you for trusting us teachers to implement such an important vision.
So with that, thank you, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for that. So really no questions from my standpoint. I think it's, you know, it's an amazing program. I love the enthusiasm, you know, I love the stories. I think, you know, these are the kind of things that as a board member, I love to, you know, hear about because it really focuses in on, you know, very specific examples of the work that we're doing, the dynamic work that we're doing. So, you know, kudos to you, kudos to the team for the work you're doing. You know, one thing I would say, I think, once again, I was really looking at this from a benchmark standpoint of how we're going to address the future strategic, you know, items as we rotate through. And once again, I think this is very important, you know, this kind of presentation. You know, my take from talking with other board members, and I would love you guys to weigh in, is when we think about the strategic themes and the strategic objectives and priorities, I think we're really looking for more of a data focus, right? To understand collectively, like, yes, we want these anecdotal stories, we want the individual stories because that storytelling, and it helps us to visualize beyond the numbers. But, you know, as you know, one of the things the board has really set a goal of is leading through data and making better decisions through data. And so, you know, some of the feedback, and, you know, I'll try and condense it and send it more in email, but just holistically, would love to pull the board out of the weeds a little bit, you know, and when we talk about the strategic priorities and really get more into the data, right? You know, how do we know we're moving the needle on innovation in the district? How do we know that that innovation is leading to student achievement and closing the gap? You know, where's the needle now? What's our goals for semester one, semester two by the end of the year? So I think those are some of the things as we look for future presentations that, you know, I would love to see addressed. But, well, once again, fantastic work, amazing, you know, my kids had Rushlow, so I know what a dynamic, you know, group of teachers we have and educators we have here, but that would just be my feedback.
One thing I'll say is when we are looking at an innovative program, as we do baseline data, which is what we've done with the Panorama data, we'll see, and our metrics that we're looking for is, are we seeing a growth mindset over the time with our students? We won't know that data until we actually implement a program that's never been experienced before, so as we look to that, I'll bring that back and share that with the Board of Education.
We'll start to the left with Mr. Member Burke.
Cut it to the story.
The box of texts.
We'll worry about tomorrow.
No, I'm really excited about this. It's always, I think it'll be number one for the elementary teachers, so they have a chance to have to plan, which is great when they didn't have that, like, fifth special, and then they had recess, had recess duty stuck that day. So that's great for them, and it's also great for the students to have this kind of period of exploration. So I'm very excited to see this and to see the data out later. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Yeah, I love this stuff. This is some of the work I did at WESAC across the state, so very close to my heart. So thank you for your time and investment this summer. Remember, McQuaid and I were talking that we have some of these books and journals. Nice to see them in the collection. Yeah, I do want to lift one point from President Wilson. In my notes, I did put down, I'd love to see the data and the impact of these great experiences that the students are marking. So I would love to hear more about the baseline data, what's your pre and your post, and with regard to the Panorama data, I understand that it's going to be the growth mindset, but also what are the gaps that we're hoping to close with these programs? mindset, but also what are the gaps that we're hoping to close with these programs? So in future presentations, I'd love to say, I'd love to hear, like, here's the data that we're looking at as we start this pilot, and we're targeting these things in the dataset. By the end of the year, we hope to have growth in these pieces. Thank you.
That's President Chesley.
I love this. And I did read about two of the books as it was going down, so I liked the one about Vashkay, I think Vashkay.
Yep, that's good.
I love that. So I'm really excited about the material that you all shared, the stories are also very helpful. I'm always excited and honored to see the commitment of our educators and the people who are doing this day in the day out in the classroom with our kids. So I value that. I do want to underscore, like, you know, my wonder is that, so you know, I have questions like, you know, how will we assess the learner's progress through their plan, right? I also understand when you're pilot testing something, you don't quite yet know, you're sort of figuring it out as you go, but there's some assumptions that we're making, right? There's something we're attempting to solve for, so while we're getting the data, we are testing some assumptions. So even if you let us know what those assumptions are and what we're solving for, that would be helpful.
I can share that with you right now. The answer is, the problem of practice we're attempting to solve is, will explicit teaching of growth mindset or of neuroscience in a developmentally appropriate way increase and support a growth mindset in kindergarten through 5th grade teachers?
And the value of a growth mindset is?
The value of a growth mindset is that it helps you to understand that you are in control of your destiny as a learner, so that no one else takes your power away as a learner, and that you know how to navigate a system, because you know that as I have the ability to learn, I seek out the folks and connect with the folks who help me do that. Additionally, we'll be looking at, as we look at collaboration skills among students, are we seeing more true collaboration versus parallel play? Parallel play looks like when I walk into an elementary classroom, four students are sitting around the table, and they look like they're working together in a group, but they're really truly just working independently on a shared task. So as we start to look at the interdependence of the collaboration process, we'll see a growth in that area as well. That's our hypothesis. So thank you for asking.
That's exactly what I'm saying, so thank you, that was clear, and you could measure that up time. The other thing to note about was the I statements, I really like the I statements, but I can only imagine as an educator how you translate that for a kindergartner. Like, from kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third, fourth grade, how you translate that and how you assess whether or not the young learners can fully understand, well, we know they don't fully understand, but the whole point is to sow the seed that I am in charge of and I have some control over my learning. So I'm really excited to see what happens. Thank you so much for your commitment, and, you know, just looking forward to learning more about testing the assumptions about the value of that growth mindset for young learners. Thank you.
Member Chrissensen.
Yeah, I, after all my fellow board member sentiments about the excitement of this program, I have two elementary students at home, and last week they came home on the first half-day, and both just, there was the buzz over the innovation special, and they told me all that they knew about it. So we experienced that excitement at home regarding this program, and, you know, happy to learn more about it today at this meeting. My question, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, because obviously we want to test this pilot, you know, it's a pilot program, and that we're, you know, being hyper-focused on innovation during this period. And I wonder, or I challenge, you know, are we being too restrictive or prescriptive in innovation? Should this be trickling into our everyday work? And I'm sure it is, but just when we say this is a special, I want to say yes and, are we doing this every day? Are we putting these things that we're learning into actual in practice every day?
One of the things we know about innovative practices and innovative instructional strategies is, for some folks, they need to see it in practice to be able to take that next step and take that risk themselves. So this is one of those ways we do that. Additionally, as we grow this program over time, the future of this program will be that two, three, four years from now, it's not going to be the same for all students. We need a foundational year where all students get a foundation. But our goal is, by the time our kindergartners are in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, they're working with community partners to solve real-world problems and innovate in a space where community partners are coming and pitching ideas to our young people, and they're choosing what problems they're going to work on, and then they're working with our community to solve something our community needs. So there's a long-term thinking focus as well as the now, so there's the now, the next, and the long-term, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other question?
Start that later.
Wait, you have to start way down.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you started first.
My mind is, well, we talk about sort of going back to the dynamic plan, and this is one of the pieces we're doing to adjust the dynamic plan, right? And so we say that PCCS will be recognized as a leader and innovator for student learning and growth. And we don't have to address it tonight, but what do we mean by leader, and then innovation, or innovator, because you're going on words, not right? And then who are we hoping to be recognized by? Is it internally, is it in the state, is it nationally? I don't, we don't need to unpack that tonight, but as we think about the dynamic plan and ever presented, we use the words on the page for framing it, so that when we're listening, we're all in agreement that this is the path we're on, that we understand that the leader is the innovator who we're expecting to recognize us at some point. So thank you for asking that.
Number seven.
Thank you. Just a small question. I think I may have asked this in spa, but I can't recall the answer. I'd love to hear the connections from this program to the STEM programs that we invested in. You know, the STEM programs for the elementary levels have been really well-received, we put a lot of money and effort into that, so I'd love to see the connection, if you want to talk about it now or later.
I can talk about it right now.
So actually, if I could, one of the things I was going to ask is, because you're really hearing the theme of, you know, the kind of the structure that I think the board is requesting. So one of the things I was going to ask is, if board members, once again, to the question, does this presentation provide us the data needed to provide proper oversight and ensure that dynamic plan is being implemented with fidelity? If every board member can email me, you know, questions, suggestions, and then what we can do is package that all together for Beth Rell and allow her to kind of come back, but then also, you know, we'll work myself, Vice President Chesley, we'll then work with Dr. Merritt to use kind of that framework to build out future presentations as well.
Sure, we can add this in the spa, look if you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to just take a moment to give a shout-out to Ms. Rell and her leadership in this space. When we talked about the beginning of the summer, I cherished her with coming back with something that was innovative, and as you know, everybody that was on the committee for our dynamic plan, you couldn't even define what innovation is, Vice President Tastings' point. And so I gave her that task to go forward, and so she pulled leaders in this space within our local leaders here, as you heard, some of our local educational leaders, national leaders, and really went to work and developed this entire curriculum over the summer and about a month, and it is amazing. And so all of the things that you're asking for, it's good you're going to get that direction. I know coming into this meeting, you're asking to narrow this down about five, six minutes into a lot of the things that she was planning on talking about with the data she didn't share, because I said, well, we've got this amount of time, let's highlight the excitement and the buzz that's in here. And so being able to come back and demonstrate the work, the action plans behind this, how we're measuring its success, there's a lot of planned avenue study that this team right here was involved in every single day, we couldn't be home on summer vacation. So I appreciate that work, and when we talk about what innovation looks like, just last week, I sent you a video from the news where, again, our number-one leader in the educational space, U.S. Secretary Cardona, is talking, the reporter asked him about, you know, how are we using extra funds and how are we being innovative? And in all the places that he's visited across the nation, what he highlighted is innovation found in Canton, Michigan. That's what our team is doing right now, and you're about to see this in that pitch special. And so when we're recognized, we are going to be those that are coming to our door and knocking, saying, how did you do that in PCCS? Because we want that for our kids. So we'll come back with the data and the plan, and I'm really excited, and I'm thankful for your leadership, Ms. Rell, and I'm thankful for our team, really just, as you said, just doing some new things and learning differently. The upside of the pandemic, we were forced to learn how to reach kids differently, but instead of going back to the way we did things, we're knocking it out the park, and we're seeing it's okay, you know, fail forward. And so I appreciate that work, and I'm looking forward to being able to share the journey.
All right, so thanks, thanks for being the first out the gate with that one. It's always tough to be the first one out there, so we appreciate you going out there first. All right, next up is Finance and Operations, Summer Custodial Cleaning Update. Once again, if we can keep the presentation to five to seven minutes, that allows the board time to answer ample questions.
Yes, so this evening, our part of the Dynamic Plan for the Finance and Operations Group includes the design, construction, and maintaining the district facilities in order to enhance the learning environment. And tonight, we have two presentations to show what we've done over the summer, cleaning work and the summer construction. First, we have from ABM, our partners, Kyle Thelbaum, Todd Fleming, Melissa Mascarello, and Dina Davis. Our internal staff as well, our PEs, our cleaning assistants, Randy Rice and Rich Welsh, are also represented up here too, and we're going to go through this rather quickly. Thank you.
First and foremost, good evening, Dr. Merritt, good evening, board. Hope you're enjoying this beautiful, lovely Tuesday afternoon slash evening. We will be reviewing our fourth quarter KPIs, in this case, it's actually our summer clean operations, which is our favorite presentation to give because it's a bunch of pictures. Exciting for us because we get opportunity to pat ourselves on the back and say, hey, here's the end result slash final product of many, 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 work with our tired nights, days, weekends of our staff that spent in your district, making sure that these buildings look brand-new when students and teachers return on the first day of school, so very proud. So, further ado, quick overview on staffing, current staffing level, right, 98 headcount, of those 98, 95 and a half are full-time custodians, 81 are full-time regulars by part, and 12 of those are substitute custodians. We do show kind of where we're at from a fourth quarter standpoint, things have slowed down in the fourth quarter, but we are anticipating an uptick, obviously with the holidays going up, people looking for jobs. I'm cruising. Current versus, you good? Current staffing versus our contractual obligations with MLU3, which was in effect on July 2022. We are fully staffed with 60 custodians, 24 working leads, and we actually have 12 substitute custodians, which is three and a half more than eight and a half of our target. PCCS, are you?
We are also fully staffed. We have 23 plant engineers, five cleaning assistants, and our new cleaning supervisor. I appreciate and thank you for allowing us to have that position.
Next, keep forward indicators. First is the Summer Clean Survey. I do want to emphasize, this is a flyer, it should have gone out to all the administrators in the building, and, oh, that QR code. The QR code is active. I will admit that the return rate is pretty slow, so if you could pass the word, maybe say, hey, you know, please fill out the survey because the name and game is continuous improvement, and we are by no means perfect, we definitely want to continue to improve our services here at PCCS. Now pictures.
Good evening. So what we're going to do is kind of just go over our summer clean, what we did in the buildings over the summer. What you'll see is a lot of the floorwork, but it does really demonstrate what we did in all of the rooms from top to bottom. So just quickly, when we go into a room to do a summer clean, we work from the top to the bottom, doing all of our high dusting, our windows, we do all the cleaning of the furniture, remove it out of the classrooms as well, and then that's what we do a lot of the floorwork, is what you'll see here tonight. So first up is Allen, we have some classrooms, some entrances, and some hallways to look at. Bentley, there's classrooms as well. Ford Elementary, we have some classrooms up there, some hallways in the main corridor. Kent Middle School, there's the cafeteria, the comments floor, main corridor, and this other hallway as well. Discovery Middle School here, we have the cafeteria, the classroom, and some hallways. And then Dodson, you'll see some classrooms, the art room, and again, some hallways with the floorwork. East Middle School, we listed the choir room, the cafeteria, the classrooms, and hallways. And then at the board office, we did do a little bit of carpet care, we do plan on doing a little bit more in the winter break, as we didn't get to do as much this summer over at the board office there. Erickson, again, we have classrooms, hallways, and the main corridor. Farron, again, hallways, main corridor, and the front entrance is listed. Field Elementary, we have the classroom, hallway, there's the media center, and a main corridor. Gallimore, classrooms, the cafe and gym, and then the main corridor as well. Holman, you have the cafeteria, classrooms, and the staff lounge that you see there. Holstein, again, classrooms and a main corridor. Is Sister, same classrooms, entrance, main corridor. Liberty, you can actually see one of our employees there doing part of the work as well, but you see the classrooms that are listed there. Miller Elementary, classrooms, we also listed the hallways. Pioneer Middle School, you have the cafeteria listed, the classroom, there's a couple of hallways. Plymouth High School, we listed the bandroom, there's the cafeteria, and another classroom. Salem High School, we listed the stairwells, there's a couple of hallways in the main corridor. Smith Elementary, classrooms, hallway, pictures there. And then there is Strathweather, again, there's classrooms and a couple of the hallways. Tonda, cafeteria, there's a classroom, we did show where we were doing a lot of the stainless steel work there as well, taking the trash cans out and really getting behind there, and then also the hallway. West Middle School, again, you see the cafeteria and a couple of the main corridors. And Workman Elementary, there is the cafeteria listed, a classroom, and a main corridor.
With this, just wanted to make sure we reiterate that this was a partnership with our PEs, our custodial, I'm sorry, our cleaning assistants. ABM, we really worked together as a team this year. I was very proud of how hard everybody worked, walking into buildings, walking through buildings, it was, you had a job of care, that people really wanted to make sure things were done right. So we had a ton of compliments this year from returning teachers, administrators. Salem was one of them that was really on our low-end last year, had low scores. Kim Villarosa, I'll myself, and Ms. Pies, after school, after a staff meeting, and said, this is the first time in five years I've had teachers come back and say how great everything looked. So thanks to all the PEs, the cleaning assistants, ABM, everybody, worked together as a team to make sure that we were able to establish that.
And finally, our goal is going into next quarter, staffing, I know Halle Wigg was fully staffed. We want to maintain our staff, we want to maintain our full subs, but we do want to implement positive turnover, making sure, again, we're having the best, finding the best, retaining the best here at PCCS. Employee training is obviously top on our list, continuous improvement, can't say it enough. And lastly, the quality inspections, you know, next presentation, sadly, there's no more pictures to plan. We go right to the board, you know, the boring bar graphs and pie charts and stuff of nature, but our managers will be diligently performing a quality inspection with a goal of 100 per week, so. Again, with that, hope you have other questions and discussion.
Any questions?
That was very fast.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
I have just a question, are the inspections, is it like for each area, like a classroom will be considered an inspection, cafeteria will be an inspection? It's a different building, different places.
That's correct, every building, I'm sorry, every room in every building is considered as an inspection within our geographies. Depending on the type of room, there could be anywhere from three to 25 fixtures in span.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate all the support and the team approach this year. Next up, Mr. Gassman is here from McCarthy Smith. I know Derek DeGlo is here as well, I think, from TMP. But now, part two of our cleaning and our summer work was construction. And so Brian's going to take you through our PCCS 2020 bond construction update. These updates are always on our website, we update them weekly, and so this is just a snapshot. And so this is just a snapshot of where we are with our construction projects. And Brian Gessman is here to give you that snapshot as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for having us. As Ms. P. S. mentioned, this is a kind of a snapshot of some of the stuff that we've been up to over the summer, some of the stuff that's been completed, and some of the additions that are currently under construction as we speak. We'll start with bid package, what we're calling HS1, which is the highly anticipated Salem High School auditorium addition and renovation. As a quick recap, acoustical wall panels, basically, the entire auditorium was renovated from top to bottom. So that's going to be a big showstopper for those to see, as well as the stage addition and the scene shop addition that you can see pictured here. Some of the other items and slayrings, if you want to call that, this is some of the corridor work that was completed with some of the highlights of the handrail that was replaced in the main corridor, as well as new display case and new facade on the exterior of the auditorium. On the left-hand side, you'll see some of the floor pictures of the older seating and the older colors and finishes. And then on the right-hand side, you see the new stainless handrail as well as cabling. At this time, this was probably a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. Since then, all of the seats are since completed. And so we're awfully close in the background. The big thing you can really notice is how bright it is with the acoustical wood treatments you see in the background. Again, the other before and after from the left to the right. What was a green belt or grassy area now is the scene shop addition. Picture on the right-hand side. The package HS2, which again is a long-awaited natorium multipurpose room addition that we've spoke at length over numerous board meetings. Quick overview, again, it's an addition on the, what I'll call the athletic wing, what will soon be the athletic wing, which is comprised of a new lobby space canopy, natorium, and multipurpose room. On the left-hand side, which you see what the previous facade used to look like, the previous entrance, and then the new facade, as it stands today, with temporary partitions and what's making way for new foundations that are currently going underground, new underground utilities going on as we speak to make way for the new construction. Here's a closer look at some of the demolition that took place of that front entrance, which used to be the athletic entrance, needed to make way for the new lobby space. And again, soon will be encompassed in the new lobby as the building addition continues. As part of this project, one of the challenges was displacing the parking. And so this parking lot, we'll call it the West Parking Lot, was added to help displace some of the parking spots that were lost. So originally, we worked with the district. This was going to be opened up at a later date, but actually is going to be open as of tomorrow, which is, we're going to actually use that as a lay-down area for the rest of the winter. But in good news, we're going to, we got that finished this summer and turning it over tomorrow. Bid Package EL2, which consists of Miller, Burr, and Smith. Starting with Miller, Miller was one of the only ones that did not get the, did not have a secure vestibule per se. So this is one of the final remaining buildings to get that. So they received the new front office addition, or getting the new front office secure vestibule addition, gymnasium and classroom addition. All of these buildings receive playgrounds, much like you saw from previous slides of previous projects. Again, the before and after of the front entrance, which is now making way on the right-hand side, you can see for the new main entrance and secure vestibule. On the backside of the building is making way for the gymnasium and classroom additions of before and after, as well as the old main office is now a classroom space that's since been converted and is currently occupied. It was occupied from the start of school. A glimpse at the playgrounds. Again, as part of the equity for the bond, the 2020 bond, all elementary schools get playground equipment. And again, I'm also very excited to play on that from the start of school. Burr Elementary, similar in nature, minus the front entrance addition because they did have an existing secure vestibule. Before and after of the new gymnasium and classroom addition on the backside of Burr Elementary. Burr and Smith, which you'll see shortly, also received an update to the kitchen. If you've ever been in those kitchens, they're white crabs, so we've made a little bit more outdoor room and moved the new serving line out to what will be the cafeteria as opposed to the cafeteria on that is today. A couple, we painted some rooms, put new carpet down in some of the media centers, you'll see here. And again, highlighted some of the playground equipment. Smith, virtually same scope of work. Again, before and after, again, we're a little bit further than that, but you'd be able to deal with what it used to be versus the foundations you see on the right-hand side, making way for the outline of the new addition. Well, nearly identical kitchen renovations took place over at Smith. One thing that happened at Burr in previous bonds that is now happening at Smith is the renovation of all their individual classroom bathrooms. So I think roughly 23 bathrooms, this all took place. On the left-hand side, as you can kind of see, is an in-progress demo photo, and the right-hand side is the completed project. And again, more playground equipment. And I think that's it.
Mr. Gessman, can you just let the board and the community know what the estimated time of arrival will be for these projects?
So we've always planned on sprinkling, which is still what we're planning on for EL2. So that's going to open up the gymnasiums and those classrooms at that point in time. The bid package HS2, which is the gymnasium, that's about a two-year project, so that's going to be fall of 2024. And then it's a two-parter, two-part special for HS1, which is the Salem Auditorium and Scene Shop Edition. So the Scene Shop Edition has always been scheduled for right around Halloween time, which is still what we're still kind of scheduled for. And then we're working with Paul Burr as we speak for the first production to take place in the auditorium. But we're awfully close. We are waiting on the last parts and pieces of some of the theatrical lighting components, but we are awfully, awfully close.
Thank you.
And I open up to questions.
Great. Are there any questions?
No. I think, I'm sorry. I don't really have a question that I can comment.
Yes.
Anyway, I'd like to, again, thank the community for the support of Bond 2020, which is allowing us to do all this fantastic work and equalizing the resources of these schools. And I know it's, in the past, people were not aware, if you needed playground equipment, your CFO had to raise money to put new playground equipment in your school. And so it's great that they're not only getting this new fantastic playground, but it's also inclusive equipment, so all children can play on the playground. And just even having, the equity of having a separate gymnasium is going to be so fantastic for those schools. So thank you so much. They look great, by the way. Thank you.
Other question?
No, I appreciate. Ditto on her point. Oh, sorry. Why would she keep giving me a second? My shirt, I just want to ditto Member McCoyn's comments.
That's it.
Oh, that, no? Oh, okay. I appreciated the question, Ms. P. So in future reports, if you could just add like progress of plan, that way we do fall behind, without sort of finding out later. But just along the way, just sort of add that one of these. I appreciate the thought and study of that one of these. That's my question. So thank you.
Yep, and I would just piggyback on that to just request, you know, a timeline, which, just to re-ground us, you know, to Member McCoy's point, you know, this was part of the Bond 2020. So even just opening up with a slide that just real quickly just shows us what's been completed to date, what's in progress, and that's, you know, what's coming up. I think of, you know, parents who are at home or community members who are at home, I think that would, you know, really ground them. And then also the budget, you know, how much we have to spend, how much we've spent to date. I think opening up with that kind of slide would be perfect. And then going into the ooze and the odds of the beautiful in-progress. Who doesn't love construction, right? So, so yeah, that would be my request.
Sure.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. It's always so exciting to see the progress and updates. And again, anecdotally, my kids are going to one of the elementary buildings that are being touched right now. And so it's, you know, that new playground equipment. They were talking about the innovation, yeah, special, but then the buzz also of the new playground equipment and what was happening at the building. So it's cool to see, and thank you so much.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, and last in this section, is Act 230912, Consider Approval Resolution for Memorandum of Understanding for School Resource Officers. This is the final reading. And so before I open up to the motion, just as a reminder, and as a thank you to Chief Ball for going back and forth, you know, with us and really being a great partner. You know, it feels like we landed in a really good spot. And everyone's had ample feedback, the opportunity to provide feedback. You know, we worked with our attorneys to, you know, to push through what we could get, you know, pushed through, to make sure that it was in the best interest of the district. So personally, I'm feeling good about it. But with that, I'll open it up for a motion, Act 230912.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution for Memorandum of Understanding for School Resource Officers. I'm going to make it Act 230912.
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any further discussion? Nope. All right. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion passes six to zero. All right, onto citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? No citizens' comments. All right, I'm moving on. Now, onto Act 230913, Consider Approval of Resolution to Adopt a Superintending Evaluation Tool. First and final reading, once again, Member Christensen, McCoy, and Secretaries Do put together kind of a synopsis of the three. And so we're looking to move forward with, based on the recommendations. So just to refocus everybody, can you just, Christensen, can you just maybe give 30 seconds on the tool that we're looking to recommend to the board?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Punch.
I'm gonna punch. No, no, I'm gonna ask Members Do and McCoy to certainly interject. But, you know, last meeting, we, you know, talked about that group, or that kind of comparison chart that the subcommittee put together in terms of, you know, what tools were available. That was a lot of really good discussion too at the meeting in terms of what's been used in the past, you know, maybe what would be a better avenue for us to move forward. There was a Collins and Blaha tool that we were comparing to the tool that we're using now, just by MASP. And then there was also a, I'm forgetting the name right now, the.
Advance.
Yeah, this is School Advance, which had a much longer training period and it seemed to be a little bit complex and could be, procedures a little bit convoluted. So I think during that conversation, the group was leaning towards moving forward with the Collins and Blaha tool because we also use that same evaluation tool for the administrative staff as well. So there's an alignment there. And it allows us for us to customize or to interject or weave into the tool our dynamic plans of, thus, to move forward with that one.
Perfect. So, Members Do, do you mind reading the recommended resolution?
Sure. Can you do that page? There we go. Well, thank you. The recommendation, the recommended resolution is after the review and comparison of several models that was moved by Member Blank and seconded by Member Blank to adopt Blank as the superintendent evaluation tool to be used by the Mid-Canton Community School Board of Education during the evaluation process.
Perfect. So do I have a motion to approve the Collins and Blaha tool as the official superintendent tool moving forward?
I move that we adopt the Collins and Blaha evaluation tool for the superintendent evaluation for the school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries six to zero. Board Committee, onto Board Committee Job Descriptions. I'm assuming this is just an update. I know that SVA Committee just finalized their Board Committee Description yesterday, and that should be going live shortly. Has all of their Board Committee Job Descriptions been turned in? Just SVA?
And it's in my inbox, and Members Do, Secretaries Do is waiting for my input. So you'll have that.
Is that the only one? All right, fantastic.
Oh, wait, there's a question.
No, I didn't tell her.
No, she was.
Oh, stop.
Board Forum Discussion 92122. Who would like to give an update on that?
That's next week.
That is the next week?
Yes, so that is Member McCoy, myself, and Treasurer Kehoe. We have yet to determine a location for this forum. We had toyed with the idea of potentially using the Salem Auditorium if it was ready. I mean, we received a construction update, you know, that there's some work still being done, so it sounded that may not be an appropriate venue for that forum, unfortunately. I don't know what we're thinking, what we can do from there. Patty, do you have anything to add to that?
Can we just use the board office? Because, I mean, it has, you know, the overhead.
Okay. I don't see why not. We would just have to.
Conveniently located.
You do have spa that night at the board office.
Community Forum, the topic is.
Student Center.
Yeah, Student Center, that kind of tenant, that pillar of the dynamic plan. I suppose we need to just see what's available in the evening. I don't know.
So are we sure we want something in the board of the district?
Yes.
So we may want to check with, check with you and see if that's available.
Okay.
And maybe give some.
Okay.
And maybe to back up, maybe one of these centers, you know.
Okay, last thing at that.
And then who do you need in terms of, are you advertising?
We would like to, yes.
If we could, have an email sent up to families.
So you send something to us?
Yeah, we can push up. Yeah.
And then something for the website?
Yeah.
You can include it in the podcast as well, and there's a lot avenues.
Okay.
Excellent.
Fantastic. All right, anything else on the Board Forum? All right, next up, just to follow up to last board meeting's special meeting, which was Mick Brandon presenting the marketing plan. We wanted the board to have time to review that marketing plan and then come back with questions for Mr. Brandon. And I know there were some questions sent in advance as well, which were answered in board notes for some of them, so we appreciate that. But at this point, are there any additional questions for Mick Brandon?
So I'll kind of jump in. From my standpoint, I think it's, you know, very similar to some of the earlier feedback is just listening to the board talk about where they're becoming more data-driven, you know, and helping making decisions. As I reviewed the marketing plan, again, it was, you know, I started to look at the dynamic plan against the marketing plan and just had a lot of questions as far as, you know, how will this plan, what will this plan help us accomplish from a data standpoint, right? So, you know, it's part of, are some of the outcomes around the recruitment of staff, increasing enrollment, better engagement, and then how do we actually measure those pieces? So that would be my main piece of feedback is, you know, we'd just really love to see a more data-driven part of the presentation because I think, once again, you create a lot of excitement with that plan, a lot of what you had in there was very exciting. I can see how it could increase engagement. I can see some of those things. But I had no raw data or metrics to, you know, kind of compare them next year. And so if that's something that we could work on, you know, bring back to the board, whether it's a presentation or if we want to take a stab at it from a board note standpoint. But I think marketing, when you look at our dynamic plan, when you look at some of the goals that we have, I mean, marketing is just going to be key for that. And so I would really love to see a more data-driven approach to it.
Appreciate that feedback very much, and I think we can provide a number of things in that way. It is important to know that with the. It is important to know that with the recent launch of the dynamic plan, that a lot of our data points will be baseline this year in a lot of different areas. And so that will give us the chance to build off of that. And so we really look forward to that. And of course, our most important data point is our enrollment. And so, you know, the fall count, the spring count for our department is a holiday for us. We wait on pins and needles to see what those numbers are. And then our strategy is really be based on that. But I appreciate the feedback, and we can certainly do that, probably through board notes would be a good avenue for a lot of those rewards.
Yeah, and then once again, I think the board accepts that this is the first year of a five-year, you know, dynamic plan. And so I think, you know, we accept that there's going to be a lot of baseline data that's kind of put in there. But we're really focused on getting that baseline data established so that next year, the year after, the year after, we're able to compare and contrast. So I think that's why we're pushing so hard on it.
Yeah, and as mentioned in board notes, one good example of that is as we launched this PCCSTV concept or YouTube channel, we have a goal to get our subscribership to four thousand subscribers, which is an ambitious goal for us. And we're going to work really hard and diligent to get there. And the data growth that we've had in subscribers has led us to that goal. And it's a high goal for us, but we're going to work hard to pursue it. So that's one example of what it's around there.
Perfect. Fantastic. Are there other questions or comments?
I have a question. I was not here for the last meeting. It was not recorded, so I could not get the gist of the conversation. But looking at the plan, just to get a little bit of clarity, in terms of, I don't know the slide number, but the areas of focus for quarter one, to President Wilson's point, do you have a data for benchmark that you're starting with? And then after semester one or at the end of the year, where would you be? So I'm looking at increasing participation at district events. So where were we last year? Where are we this year? What events made a difference? And then hopefully this will increase enrollment and whatever other benchmarks that you're looking at for improvements?
Yes to all.
Was that discussed? I'm sorry if that was discussed at the last meeting. No? Okay.
Well, I don't know if that specific aspect was, but certainly our recording of attendance and our observations about attendance are a huge part of that. But again, you know, for example, we just had the first back-to-school dash that we've had in three years. And so that's really a baseline number for us, especially with some of the modifications we made to the event. Same with our wheelchair breakfast. So we'll look to grow every event that we have. We'll take data at our Coffee with Monicas this year, every public event we have, and we'll always want to grow on the number.
I'm maybe wondering in terms of the, there's an annual event that happens at the Cherry Hill Village, and I was able to attend this year, unless it was like a week or two ago. And I saw booths from universities and local charter schools, but I did not see our booth. Is that a market? Is that something that...
Unfortunately, that was the same day as that, right?
No.
Yeah, it was the day up. People were coming to our, from Cherry Hill, from the Cherry Hill.
Well, there's a two...
Yeah, there was a different one because, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, yes. I'm not sure the exact event, but there was, there was a major event, the day of the national election. We actually did some cross-promotion, but can't touch it for that.
All right, thanks.
So just to clarify, so you'll update the deck with, you know, data points or how you might represent it, but you'll update the deck and then that's what it'd be sent out, a link to that and for them?
Yes, as the data points are being available.
Yes, okay. All right, and look, we'll continue to work with you, refine this entirely, you know, get it to a point that the board is like, yes, that's exactly what we're looking for, because I know we're kind of turning the corner on some stuff. So we'll just look at this as a living, you know, document that we'll continue to push forward until we get there, so.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right, follow-up board question, board, I'm sorry, where are, no. Follow-up board questions? Dr. Merritt?
From the last meeting?
Yes.
Last meeting?
Yep.
So I have a couple of things, merf filters, is that...
If we go from the top, board members requested additional language to be added to the SRO contract, so we have that. Bullet number two, superintendent mayor, by board members with a written copy of the COVID mitigation guidelines, discussed in the SUC report meeting for conference that. And for Kehoe asked if there would be benefit to replacing the filters on more frequent intervals, we need to that in board notes. And Ms. Pies will work with Dairy Services to review transportation routes and distances for work phenomenon due families, and we have accomplished that.
A clever question with, after watching the tape, because I missed the meeting, there was a question about the metrics committee. Was that established in terms of meeting with the metrics committee? Member Kehoe would ask about that?
That's a good point. Yeah, I don't think we moved that there. So we'll follow up on that.
Okay, if you just get that in board notes.
So three follow-up items for the board. One, given feedback by the twenty-first, September twenty-fourth, twenty-first, for the board calendar items that were outlined in the president's report. So if you can look at those, and really what we're looking for is just to be back on time. If you feel that there should be something that should be bumped up because it's more pressing than current, you know, things like that. Also, of course, take a look to make sure that all of the future agenda topics are reflected there. Make sure that there's nothing that we didn't, we didn't miss, the last one piece. Also, if you could provide feedback by the same date, September twenty-first, for the newsletter that was outlined. We'll make sure everyone gets a link of that, just to make sure that those five or six categories that we outlined, that the board agrees with, if you think that there's, you know, something additional that we should add, please let us know. Or if there's something that you want to remove, let us know as well.
Something that launched the newsletter in October?
September. Absolutely. And...
And that'll be difficult, and it'll go a long time to the community.
So once the categories are set, we'll work with the administration to basically look at, you know, yes, the distribution. I know we talked about email being the, you want to email last first, but then I'm sure there's some ways that we can do some, or post it on the website, and then also some social media push around as well.
Thank you.
And I believe that those are the, I thought there was a third item I requested. One second. We need to, I don't know what it was, I didn't mention it, but it's something to do is to look at scheduling the training for the superintendent evaluation, and we really need to do that by mid to the end of October. Is that, do you remember that?
Can we get some dates right now?
Sure.
For the actual training?
Yeah.
And we need three hours, is that accurate?
We could just put two dates together to submit to the vendor or the Collins and Blachow.
So how do you guys want to do this, weekday, weekend?
Three hours.
Yeah, I'd say weekend.
Weekends are tough.
Weekdays are...
Coach. October, so if we're looking at October, October first, October eighth?
We're looking at morning from nine to twelve?
Yeah.
Sure. So we can bear?
Give me a couple of dates after this to see.
But are you able like this?
Probably day and time. And possibly the A, but we'll start at nine.
Okay. Yes, okay, so the A is starting at nine, nine to twelve, probably. And then what about the fifteen? So now going to fifteen? Okay, twenty-second?
I'll be at the M A S B conference.
Twenty-ninth? So do we just want to check with the eighth?
Can we offer possibly a week A as well?
Yeah. Wednesdays are pretty good. The twelfth looks good for me.
We have the community forum on the twelfth.
Can't do that? Twenty-six?
Yeah, twenty-six.
Twenty-six? And that would be like in October. Five to eight? Could you guys do five to eight?
Yeah.
Uh, the twenty-sixth?
So we say the eighth?
Yes, and the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, ten, twenty-sixth. Five to eight?
Yes. I think that was only the other ten hours. All right. Any other items?
Because also they do have a couple of M A S B updates, if I could share before the adjournment.
Yes.
Ready? Okay. I had the M A S B board of directors meeting last week, and there's an event that they're encouraging all board members from across the state to attend individually. They want to talk to each board member individually, not as a collective poll. And this is the M A S B government relations team. They're traveling throughout the state to look at legislative priorities for board members from all regions. So our region eight is on October thirteenth at seven PM at Wayne Lisa. I will send this out to everyone, but I want to encourage all board members to attend if your schedule allows. There are some other regions that are not as close, but I can send you those dates as well. The other topic from M A S B, as Vice President Chastain and I are attending their resolutions, not the resolutions, it's the assembly, DALL-E assembly. What they do is they go through a packet, and it takes about two hours of all the resolution bylaws that have been looked at throughout the year. And committees work on those resolution bylaws. So the entire state gets together and all board members get to vote. So I want to encourage all of the board members here to look at the document when it comes out and to provide Vice President Chastain and I with any feedback, if you oppose to anything in that, because we will be voting on behalf of the board. So the document initially comes to Diane, I believe. Do you get the resolution document? Okay, and then it's pretty thick, just spent a couple of hours reviewing it. So if there's anything that just stands out, you're like, no, I can't support this, let number just, Vice President Chastain and I know about that, like a week before the actual event. That's it.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I did remember the third. It was the strategic priority presentations providing with feedback so that then I can work with Dr. Merritt on future presentations. All right, if there's no further business, we are adjourned at nine oh one PM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh, for sticking around again.
He already did his homework.
Yes, how are your classes doing? How are your classes doing? Do you like them all? Hi, we have SCADA for...